Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna get started in just a minute. Thank you for your patience. Also, if you wish to make comment on any of the docket items, feel free to complete a comment card, and a staff member will come and grab it, and we'll add it to each item. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:50 PM. Thank you for coming to today's City Planning Commission meeting. First, I will start by reading the public formal hearing rules, followed by roll call. Well, first we'll start with roll call, then the reading of the public hearing rules, followed by today's business. So, that said, Carl Rowe, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Lund, Commissioner Joshi Gupta,
Here.
Commissioner Flick.
Present.
Commissioner Witry.
Present.
Commissioner Jordan here, Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Stee.
Here.
And Commissioner Stewart.
Present.
Okay, so the formal public hearing rules for the City Planning Commission are as follows. The City Planning Commission has established certain rules governing the procedures to be followed at public hearings. Before speaking, each person shall give their name, address, and state whom he or she is representing. Proponents for the proposal will speak first for a period of 10 minutes total. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Opponents or other interested parties will speak second for a period of 15 minutes. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Proponents will be allowed a period of six minutes for rebuttal, total. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Opponents will not be allowed to rebut. No material, including written matter, photographs, maps, or other items will be accepted by the commission or its staff at any time during this public hearing. This procedure shall be followed except at such a time when the presiding officer shall, with the approval of the commission members present, extend such time. And with that said, we will start first with the adoption of meeting minutes from the December 10th meeting.
Commissioner Flick will make a motion for adoption of the December 10th meeting minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the minutes by Commissioner Flick, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any discussion? If not, we will vote our machines. And the minutes are approved. Next is zoning docket item 00125.
Zoning docket 00125 is a request for an amendment to ordinance number 29,547, or zoning docket 02123, which granted a conditional use to permit a reception facility. To now grant conditional use to permit a bar in an HMC2 historic marinae Tremay Bywater Commercial District, as well as an HUC Historic Urban Corridor Use Restriction Overlay District. The site is located 1830 to 1840 North Claiborne Ave. and 2224 Pogar Street. It's developed with a single structure that currently accommodates five individual tenant spaces. The proposed daiquiri bar would be located in one of the tenant spaces, 1840 North Claiborne Ave., closest to the Pogar Street side of this property. The remaining four tenant spaces are excluded from the proposal and would continue to operate independently of the bar. The total square footage of the bar would be approximately 840 square feet. The applicant has stated no plans for food service nor live entertainment. Further, the applicant is not proposing any renovations to the exterior of the structure. Staff finds that the proposed use meets the standards for approval in Article 4 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and is consistent with the master plan. Therefore, the staff finds the use compatible with the site and recommends zoning docket 00125 for approval, subject to eight provisos.
Thank you. We don't have any comment cards and applicant present? Would you like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Renata Gleason Warren, owner of the Future Nothing But Fire Daiquiri. I just want to say thank you all for recommending the approval for the daiquiri shop at 1840 North Claiborne Ave. Also, our goal here is to create a welcoming establishment that will celebrate the culture of New Orleans, support the local economy, enhance the vibrancy of the HMC2 corridor. We are committed to following the city regulations and operating responsibly to ensure the shop complement the neighborhood. And also, thank you again for your consideration and support in helping us bring this vision to life.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Were you able to review the provisos, and you're okay with those?
I'm sorry?
The provisos that are listed in the report?
Yes, I did.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other comment cards for or against. Are there any questions for the applicant or staff? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve zoning docket 021-23, subject to eight provisos.
Second, Commissioner Stewart.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval zoning docket 00125 by Commissioner Joshi Gupta, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote our machines. Okay, congratulations. The zoning docket has been approved. Also, Ms. Renato, do you mind completing a comment card, so we just have it for the record, please? Thank you. I think the next zoning docket is 00225.
Zoning docket 00225 is a request for a zoning change from HI Heavy Industrial District to a C2 Auto-Oriented Commercial District for a property located in the Bywater neighborhood. 1600 Kentucky Street is developed with a building and all-street parking. The applicant has proposed to operate a new two-story car dealership at the petition site. The C2 district is a less intensive district intended for a wide variety of commercial activities, serving a wide area, while the HI Heavy Industrial Districts contain an intensive mix of primarily non-residential uses. The surrounding area includes a number of vacant lots, a storage facility, warehouse buildings, and lots that contain vacant and/or dilapidated structures. The purpose zoning change, excuse me, the proposed zoning change is inconsistent with the industrial future land use designation. The text of the industrial flum designation says that the allowable range of uses include limited commercial uses. Staff does not take this language to allow the types of commercial uses allowed under the proposed C2 zoning. Additionally, the consistency table, the table that indicates what zoning district should be used to implement each flum designation, does not indicate the C2 district is consistent with the industrial flum designation. Therefore, staff recommends denial of zoning docket 00225.
Thank you. We have a comment card from the applicant. Does the applicant like to speak? If you could just state your name and address for the record. Yep.
Good afternoon. My name is LaShonda Huff. I am here with my client Nelson Rishard, the owner of Quality Auto Sales LLC. And we thank y'all for considering the application. We were requesting a zoning change in order to operate an auto sales dealership there. And we understand that it's heavy industrial. And under heavy industrial, it allows us the storage facility to store the cars and a junkyard. And we were just hoping to get that zoning so that we can do the transactions there also.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Would either person like to speak?
No.
Okay, great.
We had something to pass out. We had to ask you.
Oh, could you just... I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had the license at one time. And the zoning, I have the picture of the zoning. It was zoned for that at one time. But I just didn't follow up on it. But I still have all the information.
Was that sent in to the staff?
It was sent, no, I didn't send it in this time.
Okay, do you have a current copy?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to s-
Motion to suspend the rules so that we can accept the additional documentation, please.
Commissioner Flick will second.
I'll call the vote real quick. Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Lund? Commissioner Gupta? Commissioner Flick?
Yes.
Witry?
Yes.
Jordan, yes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stee?
And Stewart? Yes.
Okay. So, motion made by Commissioner Witry, seconded by Commissioner Flick. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other comment cards. I just want to give the commission a chance to take a look at this. But also, if there are any questions for staff or the applicant, I'd invite that right now.
Yeah.
So, just tell us specifically what you had, did you lose opportunity to do it?
We proposed to put a, there are only gonna be like 10 cars at a time. We're just gonna buy them, put them there, and sell them, resell them, and that's about it.
And at one-
Not gonna be a junkyard or nothing like that.
And you're saying at one time you were able to do this, or?
Yeah, I had the license at one time, in 2016.
Did you actually do it, or you just?
Yeah, I done it for a little while.
And what happened?
I just, I ain't, you know, I really ain't do it anymore. I just kept up with the license and stuff. So I'm just trying to get it back again.
And this is to sell cars, no junkyard?
No, no junkyard. We permitted to have a junkyard there, but we don't wanna sell, you know, hold no junk cars or anything. We just wanna buy used cars and put them in, resell them.
Car lot?
Yeah, a car lot, that's it.
And what's there now?
That's all we was there, the same thing.
I mean, it's just vacant now? It's not, the building is not being used right now?
Yeah, I'm using it for my office, for that purpose, but like I said, we never really bought no cars or nothing.
And maybe I can just ask the staff again. Tell me, what is the problem here? Why are we recommending denial?
Yeah, so the HI district doesn't allow vehicle sales as a commercial designation. So when we look at a zoning change application, really the first thing we look at is the master plan designation for the site. This has an industrial designation. And then there's a menu of zoning districts that are deemed consistent with that designation. So, in the case of this industrial designation, that menu only includes industrial districts, which don't allow car sales. The specific commercial district that is requested here, C2, is not identified as allowable under that menu. And so that forces the staff to conclude that the master plan does not allow for the zoning change, and that's what generates the denial recommendation.
So, they would be able to represent, I mean, they would be able to operate a junkyard there, but they would not be able to sell cars that are not junk cars?
Yes.
Question. So, what we're looking at at the zoning verification in 2016 marks that the zoning is heavy industrial and that you can do a used motor vehicle dealer?
Yeah, and-
Do you have a copy of this too, Mr. Kroll?
I do, and, you know, these determinations come from safety permits. I'm not sure what was being relied on at the time, but the use table, there is a definition for vehicle dealerships, and it's not listed in HI. So, either the regulation has changed since 2016, which I don't believe is the case, but perhaps it happened. But at any rate, today you can do it under the HI zoning.
You can, or you cannot?
You cannot.
Cannot, okay. Thank you. If the owner was operating under this zoning verification, could it not be grandfathered in? Or was it seized of operation at some point?
So, if you stop operating for at least six months, you lose your grandfathering at that point. So that's probably what happened.
Okay.
You make a note in here that in some instances CPC supportive of what would be considered spot zones when they are supported by historic non-conforming use policy. This would seem to be one of those cases.
Yeah. So, that policy is written very narrowly for basically corner stores, you know, your classic angled commercial building. It doesn't contemplate an industrial-to-commercial rezoning. It's really just not written for this specific purpose.
I would like to ask the applicant, when did they seize operations, or do you know that information?
Can I speak, please? Previously, he has a dealership license where he can go to the auction and purchase cars and sell them. And so he did that on a case-by-case basis. Right now, he wanna expand that business to be able to allow cars to sit in that storage facility or on that junk site. If we can't get the zoning changed based on the articles that I read regarding the zoning, he can legally store the vehicles because it's considered a junkyard and a storage facility. And he would just need a office space in a different district in order to do the sales. And he has an office space. We're just asking to not have to purchase or rent out additional space just in order to sign a paper to be able to purchase a car.
But my question was, based on this zoning verification, and you had this license, did you ever stop your business at any time, or?
He's never stopped the business.
I'm still, I have it, but with the state, not with the city anymore. The state still have the license.
So how did you get here today?
He applied for an occupational license to start the business, and they said that we needed the zoning change.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Question for staff. So, currently, they can store the cars there, correct?
Yeah, I think that would probably be considered a warehouse.
Okay, so physically, nothing would change if they were dealing the cars and selling them and doing the act of sale on-site versus what's going on now?
Yeah, I think that's safe to say.
Okay, thank you.
As a broader question, is there a reason auto dealerships are not allowed in industrial zoning classification?
You know, when the industrial designations were created, essentially, the commercial uses that were allowed in the district were sort of pulled out of the industrial classification. So you really only have purely industrial things, and then a few commercial uses that are viewed as complementary to industrial activities. I also think that, you know, as time goes on, the zoning ordinance is assuming that every car dealership is a large lot, you know, off the I-10 service road, whereas in reality, a lot of transactions are happening online or in some other way. And so there's probably a lag in terms of where the zoning is relative to how vehicle sales are happening more generally.
But as a comment, I'd like to add that we should consider in the future adding car lots and dealerships in industrial uses just because of the intensity of the use and storing of cars and disposing of cars and the fuel and all of that. So I think it might be something to think about.
A question for staff. If we were to go against staff recommendations of denial, what provisos would the commission need to consider?
You would not need to add a proviso because this is a zoning change, straight up or down. So provisos would be sufficient.
Okay.
If I can elaborate on that, I would recommend that if that were the case, that the approval be couched in consistency with the master plan. That despite the fact that it's not on the consistency table, the commission has found that this use is consistent with the general character of a heavy industrial district.
Okay. Okay. If there are no further discussion, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I would like to make a motion to approve and go against the recommendation of the staff with the couching of the approval within the confines of the master plan as was indicated or recommended by the executive director.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor against staff recommendation from Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Joshi Gupta. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote our machines. Congratulations.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much.
Next is zoning docket item 00325.
All right, thank y'all.
No problem.
Zoning docket 325 is a zoning change from an HURM2 Historic Urban Multi-Family Residential District to an HUB1 Historic Urban Neighborhood Business District. The site has a history of residential, commercial, and industrial zoning. The site has been vacant and undeveloped, at least since 1994, and does not have a verifiable history of non-residential use. Staff is unable to determine what caused the lack of development at the site. The proposed zoning would allow the construction of a carryout restaurant, which is neighborhood-serving retail, and would contribute to the walkability of the area. The proposal would also create a spot zone, which is not compatible with the historic non-conforming use policy and does not comply with the placed designations of this ordinance. However, staff recommends a deferral to allow time for proper signage to be placed at the site. Staff recommends a deferral to the January 28th meeting.
Thank you. Uh, we have no comment cards. Uh, is an applicant present today? Do we know?
No.
Okay. Um, and could staff share, just one more time, what the deferral date is?
The January 28th hearing.
Okay. Uh, so-
Commissioner Flick will make a motion to defer zoning docket 0325 to January 28th.
Brown seconds.
If there's no further discussion, we'll vote our machines. And the zoning docket is deferred. Our next is zoning docket item 00425, which, uh, I know is, I think, being considered for a deferral. Yep, would you like that?
Yes, the applicant has requested a deferral to the January 28th meeting.
Okay. Thank you. There are no comment cards on this zoning docket? No. Oh, that's, that's fine. Um, so I'm looking-
I move to defer.
Commissioner Johnson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Flick will second.
Okay. Um, if there's no further discussion, we will vote our machines. Okay. Next is zoning docket 00525.
Zoning docket 00525 is a request for conditional use to permit a single-family residence in the GPD General Plan Development District. The applicant is seeking the conditional use to permit the continued construction of a two-story, two-story, single-family residence following the expiration of building permit 122446 New Construction, which was issued and approved under the formal zoning ordinance when single-family residences were permitted uses. Single-family residences are conditional uses in the General Plan Development District. The applicant began constructing the residence on or about 2012, and construction was not completed prior to the permit expiring. The applicant is proposing to complete the construction of a single-family residence on the subject property. However, single-family residences are only permitted with conditional use approval. Staff find a single-family residence to be limited in scope and largely, largely unimpactful on adjacent properties in the subject GDP district and environmentally sensitive areas with the addition of the stated provisos. Staff therefore recommend approval subject to one waiver and three provisos.
Thank you. Uh, we have one comment card from the applicant. Ephraim Opah?
I would like to appreciate you are giving me the opportunity to finish the house. Um, all of us that work here, I said it hard, know that it's too hard to come out with money to build a house, so it took a little longer. So I would appreciate the, the opportunity to finish the house.
Thank you. Could you just state, just state your name and address for the record? That's it.
My name is Ephraim C. Opah, 1623 Joanne Place, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70114.
Thank you. Um, there are no other comment cards on this zoning docket. Are there any questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
With approval of staff recommendation with the waivers, with the waiver-
Second.
And provisos.
Sorry, second.
So we have a motion for approval subject provisos and, uh, from Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Brown. If there's no further discussion, we will vote our machine. And the zoning docket is approved. Congratulations.
All right, thank you y'all.
Thank you. Uh, next is zoning docket item 00625.
Zoning docket 00625 is a request for a conditional use to permit a neighborhood commercial establishment in an HURD2 two-family residential district. The HURD2 zoning district allows neighborhood commercial establishments as a conditional use under the provision set forth in Article 11, Section 11.2, Table 11-1 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Additionally, Article 20, Section 20.3, point in, point four, point four, lists office as a permitted use within a neighborhood conditional, neighborhood condition, uh, neighborhood commercial establishment category. The petition site is located on Ibeville Street, one corner, one lot off the corner between North St. Patrick and North Bernadette, and is developed with a one-story, two-unit mixed-use building. No expansion of the building's footprint is proposed, and there is no off-street parking required. The staff is supportive of this request, finding that it meets all standards under Article 20, Section 20.3, point in, in neighborhood commercial establishment, is allowable use under Article 11, Section 11.2, and the proposal is consistent with the range of uses in the master's plan, future land use map. The staff recommends approval of zoning docket 00625, subject to two provisos.
Thank you. Uh, we have one comment card representing, representing the applicant. Nicole Weber?
Hi, Nicole Weber, 2131 Beenville Street. I represent the property owner. Don't have anything to add, um, other than to support the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have no more comment cards, uh, in support or opposition. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Six dash 25 with approval with two provisos.
Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Steve seconds. Um, if there's no further discussion, we will vote our machines. And the zoning docket is approved. Congratulations. Uh, next is zoning docket item 00725.
Zoning docket 00725 is a request by Sancofa Community Development Corporation for a conditional use to permit an accessory parking lot in an HURD2 historic urban two-family residential district. The subject property is adjacent to the Fresh Stop Market on St. Claude Avenue in the Lower Ninth Ward neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to develop this lot to provide 10 parking spaces, including one handicapped accessible space, to service patrons of the market. The lot meets all bulk and yard requirements. And while the CZO allows accessory parking for a primary use on a separate lot of record and residential areas, it is limited to commercial uses where parking is required. And the market is not required to supply parking, any parking, due to the exception that eliminates parking requirements for properties in the HUMU zoning district. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the master plan, but because of this zoning interpretation that limits accessory parking lots in residential areas, staff recommends denial of the request.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a few comment cards in support from the applicant. First up is Rashida Ferdinand, followed by, uh, Malako.
Good afternoon. Um, I would like consideration for the allowance of this parking lot. I'm Rashida Ferdinand, the CEO of Sancofa CDC. We, um, have a fresh market that is widely used by community stakeholders. And the street that the market is located on is, um, a street that has a lot of large vehicles, trailers that turn on that street. And, um, I've had to move my car and market patrons have multiple times. They drive really fast and turn on that street, and there's not much parking that's safe for elderly, um, people who may need support in mobility and children. Um, so we would like to have consideration to allow this parking space for, um, the people who are patrons of the market to allow safe accessibility. And I do have a, another comment of support from a community stakeholder who represents our Community Advisory Action Board, Andrea Reese, and also one of the secretaries, Rosanna Seymour. And they state that the Community Advisory Action Board is in full support of Sancofa Community Development Corporation purchasing of the lot next to the Fresh Stop Market. And as Sancofa Fresh Market customers, buying experience is expanding to accommodate our customers, Sancofa needs to use that lot next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, Malako, followed by Lily.
Hi, I'm Malako Hattori of Studio Kiro. And, uh, we've been working with the CPC staff for NPP meeting. That we heard, um, supportive opinions from, uh, the customers and the, uh, the, the NPP participants, you know, how this parking lot will help their safety to, uh, uh, download, you know, grocery. Fourth story, you know, the people drive really fast to connect to Crebon Street, and right now it's not safe environment for customers. So this parking lot, uh, will help. And also, as we designed, that the car is facing to St. Claude, and we have landscape buffer and, uh, uh, the, the resilient, um, uh, parking lot. And, uh, uh, yes, and this fresh market will support the Lower Ninth Ward neighborhood for healthy eating habits, and it's important mission for it. And we would like, uh, for you to approve, um, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Lily Gilchrist?
Hi, my name is Lily Christage. Um, I am the assistant manager at Sancofa Fresh Start Market. The way, we're the last light before the St. Claude Bridge, so if the bridge is closed, we get considerable amount of traffic, especially with the large trucks. And to accommodate their turning radius, it essentially means that whole front of our store is not parkable. And you can only, if, when people do park there, they have to literally park in the grass. There's no actual street parking on the, the street there. It also limits access to our ramp, um, when they have to park so far away. We, um, provide a senior box, so especially on those days when they come in, it really makes it hard for them to get to the ramp.
Thank you. Uh, last, we have John Mouton.
Hey, uh, John Mouton, I'm with Studio Kiro. We're at 1229 St. Thomas Street. So the Fresh Start Market, as you heard, was exempt from providing parking, but you can kind of also see in the site plan, the, the site was quite tight, so fitting parking there also really not feasible. We've designed the, the parking lot to be respectful of the adjacent neighbors, again, facing the parking towards the St. Claude where the historic mixed-use zoning is located, while also still providing, uh, landscape buffers along that side as well. And then in addition to that, uh, providing permeable paving in the parking lot as well to, uh, reduce stormwater and, and follow best management practices. As many people have talked about, the kind of safety of the street. So I was there as the whole time as the Fresh Start Market was being constructed and verify that cars are really flying down there, and, and many times felt, uh, like I was gonna get run over just walking across the street. So, um, really trying to provide something that people can come access, uh, fresh, healthy food in the neighborhood without, um, feeling like they're gonna get injured to do so.
Thank you.
Question? Question? I have a question for staff and also for the designer as well. Staff, um, the only recommended proviso I see here is the landscaping plan. Is that correct? If we were to go against staff report?
Yeah, that's-
Okay. And, um, as far as the, I see the landscape plan includes, it looks like the larger trees to be preserved if this were to be developed as you propose?
Correct. So, um, there's a lot of trees already on the site. And then, uh, what would be good to keep, would, some of the trees might need to be taken out, but we would follow and provide a landscape plan to make sure we're meeting the conceptual plan here.
Okay, thank you.
We have one more comment card from Ms. Cheryl Buckley.
Good afternoon, Cheryl Berkeley. I'm one of the associates at Sancofa's Fresh Start Market. What I'm in favor of the parking lot is because street parking, where there's street parking, there's 18-wheelers that come down the street. And if the, uh, customers are parked on the street, then their vehicle is in jeopardy of being damaged. So if they have the parking lot in the back, that gives them, um, safety even getting out of their cars because right at Folsal, when they turn, it's a lot of traffic and a lot of 18-wheelers come down that street. So it's really putting the customers in danger there. So I'm in favor of that parking lot in the back of the market.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Um, we have no additional comment cards. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, hi, be, before I make my, uh, motion, I just want to really, really, um, compliment Rashida and her group on what they have done and what they're doing in the Lower Ninth Ward. As everybody knows, the Lower Ninth Ward is, is a food desert. And the work that they have done and are doing to bring fresh fruits and vegetables into the Lower Ninth Ward community, I think, is phenomenal. In addition to what they're doing with the environmental wetland project in the Lower Ninth Ward, all of the work that you all are doing is really, really, really commendable. And the people in the Lower Ninth Ward and throughout the city of New Orleans really, really appreciate what you're doing. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to, um, go against the staff recommendation with the proviso that the staff is recommending. If we were to, uh, vote to approve the project, I'd like to include that in the motion, but I'd like to, um, move to approve the, um, proposal.
I'd like to second, um, for, um, many reasons. One of my, uh, one of my, um, historic preservation point of view reasons is that, you know, we have these properties and we have neighborhoods and we have beautiful, vibrant neighborhoods that are made even more vibrant with markets, which need parking. So we kind of forget all the pieces and parts of the puzzle. And I think this team has done a good job of really inserting a well-thought-out parking lot, um, which would really serve this market and neighborhood. And for that reason, I would like to approve this project.
Okay, so we, so we had a second from Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Brown, do you wanna?
I can, I can, I can, we can, you can replace it with Commissioner Joshi Gupta. That's fine. I, I, I'm in full support.
Yeah, that just shows the level of support that you have.
We were all jumping in. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a, a motion for approval subject, uh, one proviso? How many provisos? One proviso? From Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Joshi Gupta. If there's no further discussion, we will vote our machines. And the zoning docket is approved. Also, for the record, I want to note that Commissioner Flick recruited herself at the start of this zoning docket. Uh, congratulations. Okay, next is zoning, zoning docket item 11424.
Zoning docket 11424 is a request to reset the lot's D2, D3, D4, D5, R2, and H1 into lots H2, H3, D6, D7, in the HUMU Historic Urban Neighborhood Mixed Use District and HURD2 Historic Urban Two-Family Residential District. The municipal addresses are 5020 through 5030, St. Claude Avenue, and 1020 through 1030, Forest Street. The request stands from approved design review 1224, which requires a reset of division of lots D2, R2, and H1 into a single lot of record in order to construct in addition to an existing church and create off-street parking. Proposed lots H2, D6, D7, and D8 are presently vacant and will remain vacant until future residential development. If granted, the requested subdivision would satisfy the requirements of Design Review 1224 and result, and result in a split zone, multi-frontage, irregularly shaped lots as a policy A subdivision request. Staff had determined in reviewing the request that the proposal prompted by Design Review 1224 creates a lot that's approximately L-shaped. The multiple-frontage conditions for lot H are no better or worse than what otherwise exists. And proposed split zone conditions can be remedied by monumental map adjustment or zoning change as determined by the Department of Safety and- of Safety and Permits. Staff therefore recommends tentative approval of such a vision docket 11424, subject to two provisos.
Thank you. We have, uh, one comment card from the applicant, Johnston Burkhart, or representing the applicant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Johnston Burkhart. I'm here on behalf of Susan Silbernagle, who's the applicant and owner of 580103 General Hague. Uh, up for your consideration is the subdivision of a two-family, oh, this is the different one. I'm sorry.
The other one.
I'm here for-
Oh, okay, I got-
That's the next one.
We have no card, so-
I was confused when you-
Uh, me too. I was looking. I was like, uh-
That's number 115. That's, that's-
So we actually have no comment card. Are you the applicant, sir?
Yes, my name is Ernest William Dice, and I am the pastor of the St. Paul Church of God in Christ. We've been blessed by God to have rendered service in that lower, in that Lower Ninth Ward area for better than 40 years. I want to congratulate you guys to recognize the importance of that ministry and what, uh, has been, how we've been blessed and what we have contributed, addressing, uh, a number of things, violence and also dealing with the homeless. So I want to commend you guys for recognizing, uh, the service that we have rendered. Katrina did us in, but I think by the, um, uh, re-establishing our addition, I think we'll be able to put some other services back into place. All thank you.
Thank you. Uh, also, do you mind just completing a comment card for us so we have it for the record?
Why, sure.
Thank you. We have, we have no, uh, additional comment cards. Uh, are there any questions from the commission to the staff or the applicant? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I would, um, recommend or would like to move to adopt the staff recommendation of tentative approval with the two provisos.
Commissioner Flick will second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, if not, we'll vote our machines. And congratulations, uh, the item has been tentatively approved. Uh, next, a subdivision docket item 11524.
Subdivision docket 11524 is a request to reconfigure a lot that currently contains a legal non-conforming two-family dwelling, such that each of the two dwelling units occupies its own re, lot of record. The proposal would create a change of lot frontage that is not consistent with the existing lot frontage pattern and would, and would also result in new deficiencies in lot depth, lot area, and side, front, and rear setbacks. Surrounding, the surrounding lot pattern features lots that all front General Hague Street and the other streets that run parallel to the New Orleans, to, to the Orleans Avenue Canal. There are no other lots fronting Kenilworth Street. However, the rear dwelling unit already features an entrance that faces Kenilworth Street, and since the lot is already built out, the proposed structure and uses would not change. The proposed sub, resubdivision would have no impact on the surrounding development. The proposed resubdivision would also create lots that are deficient in three or more dimensions, namely width, depth, area, and/or any of four setbacks that would apply to the new proposed lots. For example, the creation of proposed Lot 23B reverses what is currently a corner side lot along Kenilworth Avenue into a front yard, and what is considered, and what is currently an interior side yard becomes a rear yard. These new lot, these new yard designations are what give rise to many of the deficiencies for which variances will be needed if this request is ultimately to be approved. The proposed subdivision would create a property line that bisects the existing lot along the firewall that divides the two dwelling units, thus becoming two lots of record that each, that each contain a single-family dwelling. This action would e, would allow either of the dwellings to be sold separately and independent of each other. And since the waivers would not have any impact on the surrounding per, properties, the staff can support the proposed resubdivision, subject to the necessary waivers being granted by the Board of Zoning Adjustments. So therefore, the staff recommends tentative approval, subject to the two provisos contained in the staff report.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Johnson, you can go down.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion earlier. Uh, my name is Johnston Burkhart. I'm here on behalf of the property owner. Um, and I appreciate the staff's recommendation. And in addition to the, the structural firewall that was mentioned, they visually, from the exterior, were built to be two independent townhomes. My client built these in 2005 after Hurricane Katrina, and she has lived in one of the units since then. Uh, this is part of her retirement plan to sell the other one. Uh, they're high-quality, well-maintained, uh, townhomes that are visually similar to the other townhomes that are zoned as single-family homes, uh, in other parts of the Lakeview neighborhood. Uh, there will also not be a net increase in occupancy because it's already rented as a three-bedroom double right now. Um, and the, the owner and I believe that this is the best use for the properties. It would allow someone to own in the neighborhood, uh, at a lower price point. There are probably three or four schools within walking distance, and a, a, a family could certainly own and occupy, uh, this residence and be a good, good fit for the neighborhood. Um, so I appreciate you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you. Uh, we have no additional comment cards in support or opposition. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant?
I just have a curiosity question. This was originally like a duplex, and now it's going to be sub, it's going to be a townhome?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Good luck. I'll move approval if there's no other, um, comments from the commission.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Flick will second.
And to clarify, that's with the provisos attached to the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, a motion for approv, uh, for approval, uh, from Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Flick, subject, uh, listed provisos. If there's no discussion, um, se, seconded by Commissioner Flick. Steve? Oh, Steve?
No, that's all right.
Okay, okay, we'll give, we'll give it to Commissioner Steve. Oh, okay, switch now. Okay, great.
Got people fighting.
All right, if there's no further, okay, people are voting already. Look, if there's no further discussion, we'll vote our machines.
Thank you all very much.
Um, congratulations. Last, uh, upper subdivision ratification.
There's a list of several subdivisions in your packet that we believe are eligible for administrative approval, and your action here would be to ratify that determination.
Is there a motion for approval? Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Flick will second.
Okay. Uh, if there's no further discussion, we will vote our machines. First, uh, you have a motion from Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Flick. We are voting our machines. Uh, subdivisions have been ratified. That concludes today's business. Uh, I'm looking for a motion for German.
Motion to adjourn.
If I'm-
Which rule second?
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Enjoy the rest of your time here. Thank you.